...of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good morning, all. Well, a couple of weeks ago, we had a... you were gone, it was Eric and Dave, so now we'll do the back and forth. But for a motion to approve the amended agenda, in a second, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Close, same sign, motion carries. Minutes for July thirtieth?
I'll make the motion to approve the minutes.
We have a motion in second. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Close, same sign, motion carries.
Standing, steady, and force. Fill up the table.
Um, general public concerns? None? We'll move through allocations for money for the animal shelter.
We met Tuesday night, and we voted to go ahead and purchase the land. City will go half with us, about twenty-five hundred dollars.
And that'll cover the legal fees, if we believe, and everything.
Cover the land and legal fees to get it all typed up. It will be out in Industrial Park.
Yeah. And this is to kind of jumpstart the program, so we have a location secured.
On Nineteenth Street, isn't it?
Yeah.
About three-quarters of the way up towards Union Cemetery there on the west side.
Yeah. North of La Boreas Building.
Yep.
And they got the zoning straightened out, I understand.
Yeah.
So, that approved, and they're supposed to approve at the city meeting tonight.
So, this twenty-five hundred, that's half of what they think the legal fees are, the total?
Total, total cost of...
That's purchase of the land and legal fees, half of it.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
Figured about twenty-five hundred each.
Okay. Do we need to know if that is a motion, or just...
I'll make the motion to, uh, spend the twenty-five hundred dollars to purchase the land and with the city, in conjunction with the city, for the animal shelter.
I'll second that motion.
Motion in a second. Any other discussion?
We have had the people that does the inspecting up and tell us what kind of building we need and what we need in it, and material and all that, so...
And the zoning is taken care of, so we're hopefully not going to have to be back through that.
Yeah, I don't think we'll be back.
Everything should be taken care of through the city. They just need to formal approve it like we are today.
Yeah, they're gonna do that today.
All right. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Close, same sign, motion carries. Is Cindy coming or calling?
Um, calling, three forty-five.
Okay. Well, we can, uh, jump down to some of these other...
I'll do the sheriff's annual report. Last week he gave you a quarterly report, and then he submitted an annual file, those are for you and...
Everything looks... nothing jumps out at us here? Okay, for, uh, the line?
Motion to approve the sheriff's annual report, quarterly.
You have a motion?
No, second, three.
In a second. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Close, same sign, motion carries.
We'll need to push down by two or three.
Uh...
Do you want me to check the trash and see how long it would take to approve for drainage?
Sure. Seems we're moving a little...
Mm-hmm.
More speed.
Moving along?
Yeah.
There isn't going to take long to do three people's committee reports, I'm guessing.
Yeah, well, ours are pretty short.
I didn't even bother to make coffee, that's all.
I didn't either, because I very dismean to drink it.
How confident I was.
Get much rain going.
I didn't, we were engaged before I left, but...
Uh, we...
She's, uh, got...
Three inches.
Can I stay longer than that?
Yes.
We could do that, yeah. Ben, we can jump you ahead.
Sure.
With your so and so on.
Morning.
Good morning.
Morning, Ben.
The, uh, first item that I had on the agenda today is to approve an application to work in County Right-Away for Goldfield Telephone Company in Lake and Norway Township. This is the one that they came to us here three months ago, or whatever, and, uh, started getting the ball rolling. They've since come back, and they're willing to put the fiber in the back of the right away like we've requested, and, uh, any pads will also be in the back of the right away. I attached a brief letter, just outlining that. That I'll send back to them with permit, um, as well as three locations that we know of where we've replaced structures in the drainage ditch that we want them to make sure that they bore underneath, so that if we ever have an issue later, we don't have to worry about fiber above the, above the culvert. And, and they were agreeable to that.
So, we got a boxer and go under the box?
Yeah. Yeah. We got, uh, two boxes and a pipe over in Lake Township that they gotta go underneath.
Okay.
Motion to approve it.
I will second that.
Motion in a second, on the approval of the working the right away for Goldfield in Lake and Norway Township. All those in... are any other discussions? All in favor?
Aye.
Close, same sign, motion carries.
The other thing that I had on the agenda was to approve quote for snowplow blades.
I don't like that word.
I know. It's, uh, it's a little early to be thinking about it, but, uh, now that we are in the next fiscal year, basically this is, uh, to replace the blades that we used last year.
Yeah.
Uh, so it keeps our, our inventory up, so if we do have a nasty winter, uh, we'll have additional blades.
Looks like about a hundred and fifty blades?
Yeah. Yeah. Uh, difference between, uh, the trucks and the patrols, they use different blades.
Style blades.
Yeah.
And depending on how much snow and...
I hope we don't need to use any of them this year, but...
It would be nice. The trucks wear out a lot faster, means they're going faster?
Uh, the, the concrete roads really do a number on the blades. Uh, they're harder on them.
Okay, I'll make a motion to approve the quotes for purchasing blades.
Yeah, we have a motion.
Seven thousand, six hundred and seventy-two dollars and fifty cents.
Second.
In a second. Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Close, same sign, motion carries.
That's all I have for you.
Okay, um, you and I visited a week or two ago. We're going here to get those numbers for all the other, like our salt and the stuff that you said you were in the process.
Yeah, as far as inventory of what we've got for salt, yep.
So, we know where we're at?
I did order a, a truckload of salt through the, through the DOT. Uh, they haven't awarded prices yet, but it's been the same company, I think, for the last, like, ten, fifteen years. That ends up getting it. But, uh, I think we gotta have the truckload in storage right now, so then if we order this, we'll have a truckload and a half of the calcium chloride.
Yeah.
Sand we end up buying from Blacktop Service and the chips we get from the quarry.
Well, hopefully that's way down the road.
Yeah, I don't want to think about that anytime soon, but, yeah.
How much salt do we go through a year?
Uh, average year, roughly. Last year, last year we went a little heavier, uh, on salt. Um, usually we, we run through a lot of truckload. I think last year we went through about two. But we've still got some in our bunkers, and we didn't completely empty our supply.
Okay.
All right. Thanks, Ben.
Thank you.
Okay. I'm good with that. Peggy's gonna try to ring in here to see if she's available.
Okay.
Good morning, Cindy Peggey Rice from Humboldt County. I am fine. We're a little bit early, are you okay with that? All right, let me get a chance to speak her phone, no worries. Okay, can you hear us, Cindy? Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Is it raining there?
Not right now, it's starting to pop up, make a little humid.
Oh, my gosh, it's pouring here. We needed it really bad, but it's pouring, so... But it's okay.
Yep, we'll take it if you can get it.
Yeah? So, you wanted to talk about chiropractic?
Uh, we're interested in it, uh, checking to see what it's, what it'll do.
Okay, so, um, we looked back at seventeen and eighteen, so we're gonna focus mostly on seventeen, 'cause it's a full year, so you can hardly see what's going on. Um, the total, we took out the two that are in network, that's, uh, Gorman and Calacetti, I'm not sure if I said those correctly. Um, so it took it down to the total chiropractic at about seventeen thousand eight hundred. Then you take out, if they had ten dollar copays, um, then the plan would have paid approximately fifteen thousand dollars. And we looked at eighteen, and it's trending about the same way. So, if you would decide that you want to, um, pay chiropractic services some way through your partial self-fund, it would probably be approximately fifteen thousand dollars for the year.
Okay.
And Cindy...
Does that make sense? Cindy, I have a copy of our latest, um, accounting for the partial self-funding.
Mm-hmm.
And, um, we have a balance, well, as of the last report, three hundred and sixty-three thousand.
Mm-hmm, correct.
And that's maintained pretty constant through the last six months.
Yes, most definitely. And I think, uh, your blades are running a little higher right now, but, yeah, you've, you've really built it up over the years, so I think it's, it's pretty steady.
All right.
I have a question. She mentioned Calacetti.
Mm-hmm.
That's my chiropractor, and they said that they would not cover, so get all the my chiropractor in that office.
Okay, Cindy?
Mm-hmm.
I don't know if you're hearing Linda, um...
No, I couldn't hear that question.
Okay, Linda goes to Dr. Calacetti's office, someone in the office. You said he was one of the covered ones, but she had mentioned to Linda, her doctor herself, is not covered. Is that possible?
Um, I'll need to look it up. Honestly, um, Denise had taken the two people out and named them, so I assume that that's, um, if we can find it right now.
So, you're saying...
But, yeah, the way, the way it was, the way she had it was, those two were the chiropractors that were in Blue Choice, that are in Blue Choice, that would have, that would mean that you would, um, Walmart would pay, you know, you, the employee would have, the member would have a ten dollar copay, and then Walmart would pay the rest.
Okay, then I'm assuming that it's just Dr. Calacetti and not his associate?
That could be, that's a good possibility.
Okay. So, then best exposure at this time, even if you included those in, it would be seventeen eight, or somewhere around there?
Right.
Well, I do know, this is Rick Peterson.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, that was one of the changes that was probably the most noticeable, going from our previous plan to the one that we are on now.
Right. No doubt about it, yeah, that. And, you know, the, they did, um, they're only, they only allow very few chiropractors in, and a lot of it, you know, is for, you know, they talked about how, um, it's getting more expensive and preventative, people are going there for preventative, where, you know, they're not, um, a preventative doctor, you know, and so, so they're just trying to keep, it, it's all about keeping costs down, and that's what definitely what the plan is, and, and, um, that's part of how they're keeping that cost down, is because of, of limiting the chiropractors.
Do you think, um, you know, if we say, oh, now we're gonna use our self-funding to pay for that, the next day someone else will ask for something else for the self-funding to pay for?
Well, there's that chance. I mean, we've had, we've had a couple groups that did change where, you know, the partial self-funding is helping, and then others that are saying, no, that's, that was part of, you know, the deal, we wanted to drag cut costs, and, and this was, that's part of it. And it's not that they're losing the coverage, I mean, it's just that they would have, it would go towards deductible, um, if they go to a chiropractor not at Blue Choice. So, so we've had, we've had groups both ways, and, and that has come up. They said, well, if we do this, then next, next year if we do something, they might wanna, you know, we might have to do something else with the partial self-fund, so, so where do we...
Yeah, where do you draw the line?
Right, right, so it's, you know, all, um, all the groups have, have made their decision on, on that kind of app, so...
You said the, the net, this is Bruce, by the way, the, the two that are on our, the network, is Gorman and this...
Calacetti.
Okay, so, they're in Fort Dodge, we don't have another one in Humboldt that's in our network?
I, I'm assuming you don't, um, what's your zip code there?
Five oh five four eight.
Cindy, but she runs it out of her house.
Redwood.
Yeah, so Humboldt's fine, it's not...
Gorman's in town here, too.
No, I said Gorman.
Yeah, okay.
I was just curious to know, like, we have other chiropractor offices, why...
Um, yeah, so Gorman in Humboldt, Mobley in Fort Dodge, Hussman in Fort Dodge, Calacetti, Pearson, and that's Brady and Carrie Pearson, both are in there. Aaron, Harret is in Eagle Grove, and then it goes to Pocahontas, Rikers, and Teigs in Algonquin. Those are the closest two you've stepped codes, that's how I put it.
And for the year of seventeen, how many total, do you have the total number? How many visits?
Um, no, she didn't. Uh, oh, yeah, it was, um, it was seventeen, it was twenty-five, six, and once the two were removed, so twenty-five, two, three, so it took about seventy-seven hundred dollars out, once she removed those two people, those two chiro's.
Well, you know, that, that was only my, my one concern, is if you start self-funding things that aren't covered, you know, then all of a sudden someone says, well, my medicine isn't covered under this, and I used to have it, and, um...
Pretty soon your three hundred and sixty-three is completed.
Is gone, yeah. Our self-funding over the years, has it been fairly steady, or is it growing?
Um, let me, if you'll hold on a second, I'll go grab the book while I have it in my pocket, okay? Hold it just a moment. Okay. Chiropractor group affects the most people, those medications, who's gonna be, so hitting them, you can't really approve something for one person.
July of seventeen, it totaled three ninety-one.
Or what if you don't greenlight all of the chiropractors, and just greenlight these guys in town, and maybe, uh, the gal that you see at Calacetti's who's apparently not covered, and maybe active health as a group, instead of greenlighting everybody, maybe your numbers stay smaller that way?
Maybe, they will.
Or even switches to a twenty dollar bill.
Okay, so...
It's cheaper to know what we pay now, if we have to go.
You started in oh five, and you went in with sixteen thousand dollars, so over the years it's grown, um, let's see. In, uh, two thousand twelve, it was ninety-seven thousand, and in two thousand thirteen, it it about doubled. And then you had about another ninety thousand in fourteen, so then about, at fifteen, you're at three thirty, so then you've been pretty steady since then.
Do you want to ask what Ben asked?
So, you've been, you were at three thirty, and, and at the end of, in June of two thousand fifteen, in June of two thousand fifteen, you were at three eighty-five, and in the seventeen, you were at three eighty-six.
Okay.
Wait, I have a question?
Yeah.
Is there any reason to keep that amount of money?
I'm sorry, say it again.
Is there any reason to keep that amount of money in reserve? I mean, do we really need to have that many? I mean, you figure all the catastrophic and you-know-numbers and all of that, that seems like, and...
Big mess thing.
Yeah.
It is, it is a large number, and we normally say, you know, keep at least six months of claims or, or more, um, so you're looking at probably two years of claims. Well, let me look at that.
That makes me feel a little more comfortable.
Put it in perspective of dollars, yes.
Yeah, right.
Uh, we had someone mention that maybe we should switch to, like, a twenty dollar copay, and then have the self-funding cover the rest.
Mm-hmm.
How much of a paperwork nightmare is this for, for...
It's not, there's only a couple pieces that I could, that I'd send you, and it's just, because it's on the EBS side. We're not changing anything on the Walmart side, so it would just be on the partial self-fund. And so, we'd make a tweet to your setup form, and then, um, you'd receive a new SBC for the partial self-fund to get the employees to show. So, what would happen is, um, if they go to, you know, a Blue Cross, um, a Blue Choice covered provider, they're gonna pay the ten dollars, Walmart's gonna take care of it. If they go to a Blue Choice, um, not, a non-Blue Choice provider, then Walmart's gonna process it towards deductible, it's gonna come to EBS, and then the EBS would process it, if you choose a copay, and then pay the, pay the rest. So, it's gonna be on that second process. Um, what I, what I would suggest is, we might do, um, we're talking about ID cards, and partial self-fund ID cards, if you do that, so then, so those chiropractors know that it really is gonna be a ten dollar copay, even though they don't pay that on the Walmart side.
Okay. Well, as you know, Cindy, that was one of my biggest issues I had when we switched to this new plan, was losing chiropractic for, and what's, what I don't like about it, you, some employees lose it and some don't.
Right.
That's the part I don't think is quite fair.
Right, right, they lost the benefit that, they're, they don't have the same benefit that they used to. So, some people have the same benefits, some of them have to be towards deductible.
Yeah, just, uh, from who they're seeing.
Right.
And, um, as people know, when you find a doctor that does good for you, you like to go to that same doctor.
Yeah, I, I agree, I agree.
Um, so in my opinion, I think we should self-fund it. Um, I, I don't like the fact that we are changing things, but I think we make it more fair that way, and if our policy can handle it, um, and it sounds like we do have plenty in reserve in self-funding, I, I see no reason not to do it.
So, um, there were two options. One was you're gonna have them do a ten dollar copay, and then PSF would take care of the rest, or, um, you'd, um, just not have them pay deductible and just do co-insurance. Did you wanna just stick with the ten dollar copay?
You confused me on that statement.
That was the whole...
Okay, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. So, so currently you have a seven hundred and fifty dollar deductible, and then, um, ninety percent, or ten percent co-insurance. So, if somebody goes to a non-Blue Choice provider, and let's say you choose to waive deductible, so then that means that they go into a, a provider, and let's say it's a forty dollar manipulation, they'd only pay four dollars. Because they're waiving, because you're waiving deductible, so all they have is that ten percent co-insurance. Or you're gonna have them pay a ten dollar copay all the time, and then, um, then you pick up the rest.
The four dollar co, co-insurance is only after you've made your seven fifty, you don't have, well...
Yeah, right.
You don't have any other claims for the year, except for a couple of chiropractors.
You're just gonna pay the ten dollars.
You're paying a hundred bucks, or whatever the manipulation is from a chiropractor, until you reach that seven fifty.
Yeah. I like the fact that you just paid a ten dollar copay.
The ten dollar copay?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's the most consistent, I think, I mean, that's what they're used to anyway, so then...
Yeah. So, is that what you want?
That's what I'd like to see. What's your thoughts, Dave?
I'd say the ten dollar copay.
I agree.
Keep it, keep it uniform.
Any further questions for Cindy then?
I don't, I don't believe Cindy, legit, yes.
Does that go, um, retroactive back to July first, or does that start now? Just curious.
Cindy, Linda's question is, if we put this in effect, would it go retroactive back to July first, or effective as of today?
Yeah, we can, we can make it July first, that's not a problem.
Okay.
Okay, I'll, uh, I can send the paperwork to you, um, today, Peggy, and then you can let me know if you have any questions.
Okay.
All right, thank you.
All right, thank you.
Okay, thank you, have a good day.
You, too.
Thank you, Cindy. I will need a motion.
Will need a motion.
Okay, I'll make the motion to, uh, use our self-funding to go back to the ten dollar copay for chiropractic services.
I'll second that.
Motion, second, any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Uh, close, same sign, motion carries. All right, means we're running ahead, and I see Brian's in here. You're welcome to come up.
The Board of Adjustment met on Thursday for the, uh, do over the, uh, the matrix for the Prestige site, uh, there was no public in attendance, and there was no written opposition or, or against it, turned into the auditor's office, so there was a representative from Pinnacle and one from Prestige there. So, uh, the board really didn't find anything wrong with the matrix, there were just a few items that hadn't been recorded. Um, the survey was just completed, and they didn't have a copy of that yet, and, uh, the purchases finalized for the additional ground. There was a purchase agreement in place, but they just haven't closed on it. Um, and the minority segments have not been reported in Humboldt yet. Um, so the board approved it, conditional upon those... So, uh, the board really didn't find anything wrong with the matrix, there was just a few items that hadn't been recorded. Um, the survey was just completed and they didn't have a copy of that yet. And, uh, the purchases finalized for the additional ground, uh, there's a purchase agreement in place, but they just haven't closed on it. Um, and the, uh, minority movements have not been recorded and humbled yet. Um, so the board approved it conditional upon those items being taken care of in a timely fashion. And right when I pulled up in the parking lot out here, I got a email from Prestige with a copy of the survey and, uh, they said they, um, their attorney will be contacting me to update me on, uh, when the closing will be completed and we'll have the rest of the documents. So, appears that they're on top of things.
Okay.
Any comment from you Dave on the Board of Adjustment?
Everything looked good to me. And we did get the notice, the survey, they're going to record it, right?
Yes. Yep, yep, they are gonna, yeah, all those items are gonna be recorded, um, and say, I'll find out the timeline from, um, from Alois.
Motion to accept the Board of Adjustment's recommendation on Prestige farm. LLC finishers, uh, section eighteen of AcuSta Township.
Okay, we have a motion.
Uh, second that.
Second, any other discussion?
Is this site putting up one of those electric fences also, if you know, Dave?
That would take some...
Cause there's an existing building here, right?
Yeah, yeah, there's an existing, it's a nice clean site. Nice, nice looking site.
It's one south of Odison.
South and then as you go round the curve, go straight back almost to the, well, Blacktop. At the end of Broadway.
Oh, okay.
All right. Okay? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, motion carries.
Brian, do you have a coded master matrix for me?
Uh...
Usually the board will have one that they fill out with numbers, so can I send that in with our approval?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
I'll have a copy of it.
Okay.
All right, appreciate it very much.
We'll have another one coming up, yeah, I've heard nothing from the DNR on it.
Yes, it just came in Friday, but I don't have an inspection date on that one yet. And I already heard from Iowa Select, from their public relations, wondering, actually, when I gave Prestige a copy of the zoning sixty-six at the meeting, they forwarded it to Iowa, or, they made Iowa Select aware of it.
All right.
So they contacted me and I just sent that out this morning with a copy of our ordinances and, and, um, um, so they're, just wanna know everything that they need to do to be in compliance and, and make things work smoothly, so...
They're trying to work with it.
Yeah, yeah, no, that's, um, Iowa's contacted by Iowa Select, uh, Friday morning. They just wanna know everything that they need to do, so...
Okay, good.
There is a tile out there, be aware of that.
Yeah.
Be aware, but...
Yeah, and there was another map, I'll have to, uh, I'll have to refer back. They had sent me an updated copy of a map, I don't know if that's where the pipe comes through, I'll have to refer to it again.
I've got a copy of that somewhere. I'll get a copy of it and send it to you.
Okay.
There is a tile, comes right down that road.
So that's good, we got both companies on board and...
Brian?
Yeah.
Makes wise.
She also called and messaged me, or on my recorder, I didn't talk to her. In reference to that, if there was anything the board needed, um, let them know.
Yeah, I believe she tried to contact Eric too.
Right.
And, uh, but, uh, no, that's good, we're, got the lines of communication open.
I have, uh, Brian's bill that he's submitted, finally.
Okay.
We, we, uh...
I'm used to billing at the end of a project, so...
We've been asking to, uh, help us out to, and I guess next week, claim week?
Mm-hmm.
So...
Is everything, is it okay with the hours?
Everything looks in order in there, oops, sorry.
You've got all the receipts you have?
You've got all these receipts?
You did too, right.
Tells you how long it's been since we paid you with the ticker tape hanging out the bottom.
It's March twenty-second.
You do.
Well, most people like to be paid a little quicker.
Oh, they interest on it.
Yeah. Well, like I said, I'm used to billing at the end of a project, so, but I thought, well, I better, uh...
This project never ends, so...
Well, that's what he, he requested, that it does end sometime here. So, we will get that, uh, put into the book and we should check that.
Okay, you go ahead and you'll pay that?
All right.
Very good, anything else?
Nope, thank you very much.
Thank you, Brian.
All right. Um...
Do we need to go into drainage?
Let's have to go to drainage.
Motion to go to drainage.
We have a motion?
No, second.
And second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, we're in drainage. So we gotta move, cause Dave's gotta go to a funeral here.
All right.
What time is it, nine thirty?
Nine thirty, nine forty-ish.
Mom's coming out here by nine forty, it's not gonna rain.
Where was Cindy at?
She's down in Burlington.
Oh.
Yeah.
Weren't they needing rain down there?
They're being raining down there, so they're probably pretty happy about it.
Same thing.
Uh, looking at string line up, yeah, all night.
Well, there's a pretty good red patch over in Pocahontas, in South Pokie. And Lurin.
China dude came out of Boot Sonic Boomhead and all jumped out.
My dog's just a little jumping.
She came running down the ladder. I was doing, did that, like her.
Why is it that she sleeps so much better when it's banging?
I know, I, I slept good last night.
No, the thunder and lightning kept me awake all night.
It did?
Yeah, almost all night.
It was pretty loud, yeah.
Uh, do you guys make that donation to the shelter then, animal shelter?
Uh, we made a, our contribution...
Our contribution, yes.
To purchase a land.
A land and half of the fees for the twenty-nine in the city.
Twenty-five hundred?
Yes.
So that in addition to what you had, how much before?
No, no, the, the, this is the...
The other was pulled.
Yeah, the other was pulled.
It didn't work.
Zone, right.
Where are you guys lying around?
Right up by the secondary...
Yeah, right.
Right on your office, perfect.
Yeah, we don't need a part of your lawn.
Cemetery, so we get lots of complaints.
Yeah, yeah.
Up north of Legueria is a building there on Nineteenth Street.
Okay, south of the Hog's Flat, is it?
There's a new, uh, building, I'm not sure what the new guy's...
Is that Ray, uh, Bailey?
It's right on the south side of his building.
Something to do with Hog's Flat.
Oh.
I had, uh, Mike Peterson run in this morning, was asking questions about, uh, uh, was that DD thirty-five that comes down by your shed?
Yeah.
He was just wondering what all was going on with that. I, I sent him in here to Trish, cause I told him I didn't sit in on the hearing that you guys had last week.
Well, basically all the, we did was just the informal informational thing that caused a whole lot of, the steering bug picking trees out and...
I think, I think it all worked out fine.
I think so.
It's gotta, they gotta think about it a while, you know?
Yeah.
Catch a small part and they don't know what shit's going on.
So I, I say one on Trish, so if he hasn't been in yet, well...
Who?
Mike Peterson.
You're right.
He won't have any land.
He's got a house there in, uh, Rainbow Drive.
I think, just off the Rainbow Drive area, which would probably have a little drainage over toward, but...
Maybe.
Maybe, I don't know.
His question's more along that line.
I can tell him the building that he's interested in, right on the...
Tossed him and then he thinks he's got water from, from his shed. Giving the elevation of water during his shed is affecting his base. Affecting the water table.
In Rainbow Drive?
He's away.
Yeah. Said I did, I, I don't know what that's all inside city room.
Yeah. Sorry, we're city hall.
Okay. Where do you wanna go first, the assessment? First, the drainage assessment for two thousand eighteen?
Uh, I am not ready.
You're not ready, okay.
But I do have questions on the eleven sub five. If we wanna...
Pure... That's back up.
It's part of this levy deal.
Okay.
Eleven sub five is a project with Dave Idermark, Petersons and Carmen Jenkins.
Right.
And as of now, there's a hundred and two thousand dollars of debt. And I was wanting to know if that should be levied now prior to the other, or, the projects that's happening right now. It's, I don't see, I mean, it's debt that's already there, it's not exactly prepay, but...
Yeah. Well, I don't think there's anything wrong with it. Uh, I think it'd be good to get that out there. It par, it partially is part of this project because of all the, uh, different options we looked at and expenses we went through looking at these different options. So I wouldn't, um, it would be bad, and I wouldn't, me, I wouldn't hurt to, um, put some money in the bank to pay the bills as they come in, cause we know we're gonna be getting them.
Okay, so how much do you think this levy, what percent of the projected total?
What was the...
It was like nine hundred and some thousand.
So you're not, a hundred and two, it's gonna be like a drop in the bucket?
Yeah, that, that, I mean, that's money we've spent already on this project and some repairs and things like that. I know I spoke with a few of the landowners, um, since they thought it was a fine idea.
So, would you consider like quartered?
Oh, I'd say close to fifty percent.
Well, that's what I, I didn't, I wanted to be generous, I didn't want to be quartered.
If you wanted to assess another four, four hundred thousand. Cause we will be getting bills as soon as they start bringing in pipe.
So you think I should do a total of like five hundred and two thousand?
Yeah.
Or half?
When is, when is the projection of this gonna start? Fall?
It could start this fall. They would like to start this fall.
That would be good.
So, this would be eleven in September, right?
Right now.
Yeah.
And then do in spring?
Or...
Yeah, if, if they have it done by spring, then, then, you know, but I doubt it'd be completed by then, probably be next fall again. The other option is you levy for the hundred and two thousand now, come March you do a levy and then you do another levy in September.
But you're gonna have the, the three, this would give you a cushion, a little cushion to work with some of the, maybe not pay so much of the interest.
Yeah.
That was our, last time we talked about it, that was the idea behind it.
Yeah.
And go half enough.
Yeah.
Okay. In addition to the one on two, so I will do that then.
Okay.
Um... As far as the other levies, I'm still working on, I'm trying to decipher how to split out the DV six according to the engineering and construction and what goes to be upper main and lower main. So that'll be...
So you actually sit down, Mr. Howard, and get that sorted out, is what you're saying? Okay.
Yep. Here do I...
Do you want to talk about what we talked about on Friday as far as solutions or, you know, you said that sometimes the solutions doesn't have the...
Those solutions, yeah.
I was visiting here with her on Friday and, um, our, our computer software for the solutions really doesn't work the best for her in drainage, um...
Do you agree, Jen? Comfort zone, I guess.
I mean, you just don't know what you're getting half the time and...
I just don't know what an alternative is, so...
Well, that was my question to her, was maybe what we should do is down in the southern, southern part of the state where there's not as much drainage as there is up here, maybe we should take informal poll across the northern tiers of the counties and see what Cassus, Wright, Pocahontas, Emmett...
They all do solutions also.
Oh, they do, all right. So we got...
Most of them do, yeah.
They do.
Wright, or Webster, doesn't.
Oh, that's very solid.
Okay, unless they switch to something else too, I can't remember, they were switching at one point. Um, it's, it is very...
Are you going down to ISAC?
Yes.
Might want to check down there and see if some of them vendors, they get something better.
Well, that's the point, I mean, if, if everything that we do is, is a struggle to try to keep us as fast and as current as we can, then we're at a disservice to, not only to you, but to the people that we're trying to...
A lot of us restrict it by what the limits of the ICA does. You'll pay twice a year, you'll levy twice a year, and then...
And it's, they convenient that way up.
Interest is calculated annually, it's not simple interest. It's not like a bank, but that's ICA does.
So many reports I have to get from you. And then I have my own reports that I have to give and try to combine the information, it's like, why can't they just do a query type? And I've asked them, they do not want to work with drainage, cause it's not profitable.
Yeah, it's that largeness, rule of it.
And the whole state.
Yeah.
I've even asked about changing the tax statements for drainage to some extent, to be a little more descriptive on what parcel, what's the total acres that are in that, um, parcel that are contributing to the drainage district so they know and, I mean, that's a pretty frequent question for some of the landowners. And there's no way to change that on my side because it's all pre-populated from the parcel.
Well, the other thing, and this is nothing against you, I was standing there looking at her desk and she's got a pile here and a pile here and she's doing different parts of the job, but yet if the phone rings, then she's off on another, chasing another rabbit, which then I gotta get back to whichever pile I was doing. I don't know how you keep your sanity when you're, you know, trying to make sure that this is done so that we can meet this date to get this mail to the...
Yeah.
So, I guess that's my feelings that we have to try to give her the best options of whatever the, and not only her, J and A, if that's in their office, affects them. So, but by the same token, um, you can't get ready for a September levy if you still need even papers, so I guess that was what we were gonna throw at you. Any ideas to, other than keep exploring, trying to see if there's something else out?
Well, I mean, I don't know if this is the place to discuss it, but I was in the office on, I don't know what day it was, trying to work something out with Trish. And you can't hardly concentrate in there because three feet away someone's on the phone with a different conversation, someone comes up to desk, conversations, it's, it's not a good working condition to focus on your work.
Right.
But, um, we don't have so much room in the board office.
Right.
So, but I think it's something we need to walk out.
Okay. So, would like to downstairs and then...
I don't know, I don't know. I don't know. I don't know.
Do you like the turn?
We like the smell of the ball.
Well, I'm...
Although it'll be...um...
Is it the turn is on, or is it downstairs?
DHS.
It's just, um...I don't think most counties have as much activity, constant activity.
So in the winter, we could meet with the little areas of the county, some just drainage, just see what they are using, what they would like to be different. And as a group, we've talked a solution. We're secondary.
Yeah, that might put more pressure on them if there's more counties that say, "We have those problems too, but yet we just thought we had to work through it."
Honestly, I think our landowners are much more particular. I really do think that, than usually the counties that just say, "This is the way you get it," and not that. I will. But, and there used to be a lull in the winter.
Now there isn't. You know, I can say, these projects pretty much run year-round.
Where I could cut it up to things and...
They've either gotten started and they're...
Yeah, they run until it freezes or till the frost is a foot thick anyway, and then they start and since the frost has a little rot, and so that's about a month.
Yeah, yeah.
There's not been no kind of before, for sure.
All right, well, we'll just keep trudging forward. Anything else?
Um...
That means yes, I missed them.
Um, no, well, kinda. I'll get the app to sign off on that because Wright County Board of Supervisors appointed people who are engineering to digitize their maps. It's being stretched between all of their districts, which who's sharing with us, obviously. So, can we have bills for that? Do you...who wants to sign up on that?
One's probably over there in the corner of Highway three and...
Seventeen.
Seventeen, and then that other...
Forty-seven.
Yeah, three forty-seven.
And... Two, three, four, five.
Yeah, there's an open end. Sounds like...or it'll be over in my area, so...
About that this morning, so...
What kinda cost is that gonna be to the state?
Well, that one's five hundred and twenty-one dollars and ninety-seven cents.
And I think that's spread between our districts that we share, so that'll be spread between...
So we get portion of that.
The entire, yeah.
But that's just another example of why you have to have some money in each one of those drainage accounts so that, you know, those bills don't have to be levied for...
Yep, now I gotta go look at the...I decided I wasn't going to levy 'cause we had a surplus. And we certainly have taken it. And they got engineering bills.
What's project number on that one?
Project number?
Vendor number.
This one here?
Yeah. On the front, put the vendor number. Seventy-one seventeen?
Seventy-one seventeen.
Same as this one, same price. We got duplicates here?
Is it the same?
DD twenty-seven?
One and twenty-seven, that should be...
Twenty-seven one.
That one's reading forty-seven?
This is forty-seven three.
Yeah, this is twenty-seven one.
Vendor number would be the same, 'cause that's who they're paying.
And there...this is for digi...digital...
Yep. I don't know how accurate theirs are. Ours is, yeah, fairly accurate, sorta. You know what I mean? It's hard unless they go out and manually GPS the lines as far as boundaries and tiles.
Have you heard anything on that?
Sorry, what?
Detour. Have you heard anything on the detour yet coming up?
On seventeen?
Yeah.
Uh, they didn't know when...
They gave you a dig, huh?
They didn't know when that was gonna happen. Basically, it's, uh, a combination between maintenance and the Wright County...
Wright County, changing that.
Prestige there on seventeen. They gotta add turning lanes and other things that the DOT requested for that new...
Hog facility.
Hog facility. But at that time, Adam didn't know when.
Well, we do, and it's a don't leave it off.
I wonder, you know, down there on that curve, comes across the bridge, they widen that, taking out a bunch of trees down there. I didn't know if they were gonna open up that, would make that bridge wider on seventeen? Surely wouldn't do that now.
I wouldn't think that they'd start that right now.
Oh, yeah, I noticed that, too. I didn't know if they're just doing that for sight or...
Well, I didn't know if it was sight, because, you know, there's gonna be a lot of traffic coming around there, and then you come up over that hill and then you hear that plant sitting on the top of that hill.
I think they're adding, uh, turning lanes if you're coming from the north or south to be able to turn onto that, uh...
Disgestion, a lot of disgestion, yeah.
I'm not sure what it is, D. It's not D eighteen.
No, that's further down.
That's further south.
The distance is...
Yeah.
Yeah, there you go.
Okay, I was gonna ask you that, since you're still sitting here.
And then I think, uh, here in the next two, three weeks, that bridge is getting replaced up by Underbird's House, who was delivered more, so we'll have that road closed.
What's in progress on the quarter on Highway three? Everybody in town asked me, like, it's our fault, but what are you guys doing to the bridge?
Yeah, why is it taking so long?
Because our bridge down here keeps getting...
Last I heard, uh, they were two months behind...
Oh, man.
On the bridge. And, uh, they were planning on bringing in a second crew to try and get them closer to their timeframe.
Too much longer, I think, to...
Yeah, 'cause they were already talking November, or the end of October, beginning of November for finishing, so if they're two months behind, yeah, it'll be... It'll be more than two months, because usually that last two months, like your bridge deck four, your railing, you know, all the stuff that you need decent weather.
Yeah, it gets...when it starts getting cold, can't pour if it's too cold.
Right.
How bad is the road getting beat up south of Thor, or Thor Blacktop?
South of Thor? Not bad right now.
I heard there were a couple of dips. Used to be pretty smooth, and now they dip pretty good where we crossed years ago or a few years ago.
Um, I...I just drove it, I guess, because we had, uh, the Highway seventeen is coming around south of Thor, but, uh, I didn't notice anything terrible.
Are we gonna do the patch north of Thor that's...
North Thor, that needs to be patched. Uh, I think my plan is to lump that in with Blacktop service once these three box full routes get replaced. But if Rognis doesn't move in until the end of September or October, those won't get patched till next year. So I might just have to get Blacktop to come in and do that patch north of Thor.
Well, I heard there was a lot of truck traffic up over that way, three downs.
Yeah.
That's the only way they can get into Eagle Grove.
Yeah.
Anything else in drainage for...I'm gonna tell, I'll get ahold of Doug on that up there and tell him we're gonna probably shoot or run a drone over that before we do...
Yeah, I think we should.
Before we do any spot cleaning up there in eleven?
Several swabs.
Yeah, maybe it's just time to fly it and see what it looks like and see, clean out.
I need to, too, see where that left, if you want, with your drone flight, if they have any.
All right, all that's, uh, done. The only we have left is our committee reports and dates. Gonna get moving soon.
Make a motion, John Green.
We had a moment and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
All the same, sign, we're out.
I heard they euthanized that whole truckload down there.
Well, I heard the stress...
I guess they sat there a lot.
They died on site.
They were sick, and they'd all be subjects anyway to the point of...
Yeah, apparently when they get stressed or anxiety, they start pumping something through their...through their bloods and it roots in their...
Yeah, they get, uh, it gets dark, as they say, or something like that.
Couldn't even make the talks and do something.
They used to call them, like in cattle, we'd call them dark cutters.
Yeah.
When they get stressed.
And then, uh, Dave went out then last Friday. He thinks that he might be able to slide that bridge back into place as opposed to bringing a crane in.
Oh, just jack it.
And then just, just jacking and sliding it, but I directed him to Todd Lee. I just, I said, "It's yours. It's his bridge, Mr. Rosski," you know? I know the code city doesn't want to have that road closed, at least until Highway three is open, to do anything with it.
There's a lot of rumors going around, "Why don't we just take it out?" Well, people don't understand, the railroad still owns that property.
Yeah.
Do they?
That's what Todd...
We've got a lease on it. We've got a lease on it, so...
We have a temporary lease.
Railroad owns it.
Really? See, I thought the railroad, once it was no longer a railroad...
The right-of-way went away.
The right-of-way went away.
So what, they could...they could come back?
They could come back.
If they wanted to put the railroad back in, they could take the lease back and...wow.
That's a...that's a Todd tone. That's the way I understood it when talking to John, that the railroad still owns all that. We have...if we do anything to it, we gotta be able to undo it so the railroad can take it. It still owns the railroad, the way I understand it.
The guy that does all of our bridge inspections, he came up last Thursday for something for us, and, uh, he...he looked at it on behalf of Todd and him, Conservation, and I had talked to him about raising it up like you guys have talked about, so he's gonna look at that, too. Well, at the very least, the pads need to be replaced. The wood is deteriorating that steel's sitting on, so whether it's both a jacks it up and you put something underneath of like a steel pad in place of the wood, something like that.
Well, unfortunately, if you only go, if it's twelve now and you raise it a foot, that's thirteen, and there's still a lot of trucks. They're thirteen-six, so we're gonna have that one down.
If you're gonna raise it, you might as well raise it to fourteen.
Yeah.
And then we're gonna have that kind of semi-traffic, you'll have everybody up here angry.
Yeah.
I'll just...we'll do that next January.
January, looking to that.
City council are supposed to be talking about truck routes tonight at their meeting, so...
Okay. Maybe we can look there.
I mean, they could embargo their roads, and that would stop, like, uh, John Degg and those guys from, uh, running that way to the border.
Yeah.
Would that be...that'd be a city that can embargo it.
Well, committee reports, Dave is...
Ready?
Um, the thirtieth, I had a VA meeting. Nobody really knew that applied. Tuesday, we had a meeting on the Dog Humane Society, or whatever you wanna call it, the Dog House for city and county. Thursday, the second, I had a board of health meeting. We talked about different things. They're gonna be coming in asking for more money for the next year's budget. They took an average of all the counties and we're way under eighty-six thousand. We pay them, I think the average is a hundred and fifty-four thousand or something, so... And they also had a complaint on the property north of town again. I told them, stopped in and talked to John on that. Also, Tuesday, we had a board of adjustment meeting on the hog confinement that I had this morning. That's all I had.
I had, um, Tuesday, the thirty-first, a meeting at the hall at six o'clock at the
I, on Friday, the third, I went, uh, Doug Marshall asked me to come up, tried to get ahold of Eric, which is out in town, so I went up to West Abode there on Elm for that washout and looked at up on Drainage District eleven. That was all I had. Anything else?
No.
Okay.
Most...most good here.
We have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All the same, sign, we're out.